Okay, commissioners, you are live. Have a great meeting.
Okay, welcome, everybody. This is the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for June 2nd. Planning and zoning commission will hear public comments only on items that appear on the agenda. All live public comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Additional information may be conveyed to the Planning and Zoning Commission in written form. In tonight's meeting, we will only hear public comment on legislative public hearings. We will not hear public comment on unfinished business. That is, the items that we talked about last week. The cases from last week allowed public comment prior to the case, during the hearing of the case, and 24 hours after the hearing. So we will not be taking any public comment on either the 70 Mills Gap Road project or the Charlotte Street project. We will begin with roll call.
Chair Hauser?
Here.
Vice Chair Archibald?
Here.
Commissioner Levi?
Here.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Here.
Commissioner Hoke?
Here.
Commissioner Bubenek?
Here.
And Commissioner Faircloth?
I'm here.
Okay, Mr. Chair, everybody's present. We have a quorum.
We will proceed with our administrative item approval of minutes from last month's meeting, May 5th meeting.
I know it was a very long set of minutes, so I apologize for that, and, but hopefully y'all have had a chance to take a look at them.
Um, I have a, I remember making a comment, this is Geo, I remember making a comment on Charlotte Street about how I felt that they had worked on a lot of really great details, but I was concerned about that the value, as the project goes into the value engineering stage where they're refining details and stuff, a lot of that would come out and we would not get some of the richness of that, and that was not included in the minutes, and I would like to have some reflection of my comments made.
We can, we'd be happy to go back through the, and we can look at the recording and kind of get a good account of what you said and add that to the minutes if that's okay with you.
Thank you, Sharon.
Any other edits? Would someone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve with amendments with revisions.
Second it.
I'm sorry, who was that second? Was that Brenton?
Robert.
Oh, Robert, thank you.
We have a motion and a second to approve last month's meetings, excuse me, meeting minutes with additional comments to be added that were made by Mr. Rodriguez. We will vote. Mr. Hoke?
Aye.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Archibald?
Aye.
Faircloth?
Aye.
Ms. Bubenek?
Aye.
And Ms. Levi?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We now move on to our first item of unfinished business. Item one is a request to conditionally rezone the property located at 70 Mills Gap Road from industrial, IND, and residential, single-family, low-density RS2 to residential expansion, conditional zone, RES EXP-CZ.
Mr. Chair, I'm just going to offer a very brief comment about the project. As you stated earlier, just to let everybody know or remind anybody who might be listening from home, this was a conditional zoning whose public hearing was heard last month at the May 5th regular meeting. And in response to that, that hearing, the applicant has submitted some revised plans, and I summarized those changes and put a copy of the revised plans in this month's meeting materials. Of course, all of last month's meeting materials are available as well in the May 5th document link. But for this month, just to, I'll just very briefly summarize the changes. The applicant is proposing to reduce the number of single-family lots from 76 to 51, so that's a reduction of 25 lots. But those 25 lots are being replaced with 28 attached single-family townhome units. So that's a net increase of three units, but it's a smaller footprint. The townhome units will utilize shared driveways. The grading has been revised to no longer include the cut slopes that exceed 2 to 1, and it's also reduced the overall extent of grading from 13 and 1/2 acres down to 12 and 1/4 acres. Driveways are 18 feet deep where they're adjacent to sidewalks, and the sidewalk planting strip has been expanded from four feet to five feet to accommodate the trees. And the extent of the retaining walls has been reduced. The number of walls, the location of the walls, and the maximum height, I believe, are the same, but the overall length and amount of square foot of finished face has been reduced. So that kind of summarizes those changes. Hopefully y'all have had a chance to look at that, and the applicant and their design team is also available if you have any additional questions.
Any further discussion on this project or on this case?
I'd like to make a few comments if I can. You know, I certainly appreciate the applicant's project team, you know, working to make the changes. I certainly feel it's great. You know, I know I made the comment last time that I didn't want to see a reduction in the overall number of houses just to make it fit. In fact, if you brought more, that would be even better. I still think it's a little light on where it could be, you know, especially on the affordability issue. You know, we're barely over 6%. You know, 79 total units, five of them being affordable, that doesn't even hit the bare minimum of 10%, if, you know, not even mentioning the 20%. And there still are some, you know, issues as far as being over the total amount of square footage disturbed for steep slope area. So it certainly is better. I still think it could improve more.
I have a comment. Can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I want to reiterate what I said the last time, which is, this seems like the same site plan technically, I mean, with just an addition of different housing structures, but the, it doesn't seem to really deal with the topography or any kind of creative attempt to cluster buildings or to have, I would like to see more different housing types and smaller, maybe, one and two bedrooms. I think as Commissioner Archibald said, we're going in the right direction. We're not there yet.
Any additional comment?
If there isn't any, I'm happy to make a motion.
Please.
I move to deny the conditional zoning request for the property located at 70 Mills Gap Road, industrial and residential, single-family, low-density RS2 to residential expansion, conditional zone, RES EXP-CZ, and find that the request is not reasonable, not in public interest, not consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, and does not meet the development needs of the community, and that the request, one, results in significant impacts to the natural environment, two, does not support goals for a diverse community with a range of housing types and affordability, and three, does not promote a walkable, bikeable community.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second to deny the case. We'll take a vote. Mr. Hoke?
I agree.
To clarify, I would be in favor of denying. Mr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Archibald?
Aye.
Mr. Faircloth?
Aye.
Ms. Bubenek?
Aye.
Ms. Levi?
Aye.
And I will also vote in the affirmative. Motion is denied unanimously.
And, I'm sorry, just to clarify, this item will still move on to City Council. It just moves on with a negative recommendation.
Correct, correct. And just as we enter into the next item under unfinished business, this case will also move on to City Council. And I will reiterate what Ms. Tuck said a moment ago and what I opened the meeting with. We are not accepting public comment on this case. Public comment was accepted during the hearing, before the hearing, and after the hearing for 24 hours last month. We did receive additional comment on this case during the 24 hours after the hearing, and it was shared with all of the commissioners. Item two is a request to conditionally rezone the 17 properties located on Charlotte Street, East Chestnut Street, Furman Avenue, and Baird Street from Community Business 1, CB1, residential multifamily, medium-density RM8, and residential multifamily, high-density RM16 to mixed-use expansion, conditional zone, MXD EXP-CZ, along with a change to the future land use map from traditional neighborhood to traditional corridor.
Thank you, Mr. Hauser. So again, as this item was, the public hearing for this has already been conducted. I hadn't intended to go through the materials, but I can pull up anything as if this, as if there is discussion and you would like me to, I'd be happy to pull up the site plan or any of the other materials. Just let me know. There was, there was a little additional context that was supplied by the applicant in response to the commissioners and staff's comments from last month addressing some, some site context for the townhomes on Baird Street and the small multifamily on Furman. That was included in your meeting materials for this month, as well as copies of some of the other, just, you know, for easy reference, a copy of the staff report, a copy of the B1 conditions, et cetera, from last month. There are no changes proposed with the B1 conditions at this time, no other site plan changes, just that additional contextual information for the commission's consideration. I will be available for any questions. I know the developer and their design team is also available, and in the meeting if there are any questions for there.
Is there further discussion?
If not, I'd like to make a motion.
I've got a couple of comments I'd like to make, if I may. As both Ms. Tuck and Mr. Hauser indicated, we did receive additional public comment within that 24-hour window, and I did, you know, read all of those comments. Most of them were similar to comments that we'd received before, either for or against this particular project. You know, we spent a lot of time talking about this project at the last meeting. Mr. Hauser made some, I thought, very apropos comments at the very beginning of the discussion of this project, and those still apply. It really seems like this project has become a sticking point in the community around increased development in neighborhoods, especially around existing historic neighborhoods, or, I hate to even use the word historic, just, you know, older neighborhoods, let's say that. You know, affordability around housing is an issue for everyone. If, you know, you do all your shopping on Amazon and go to Sam's Club and look for the cheapest price, you're not helping the affordability issue. Affordability is a problem because the wages are low, there aren't the jobs here in town, and it just continues to be perpetuated by those who kind of see that, you know, they have theirs and no one else needs to have anything else. If you're not part of the problem around affordable housing, or you're not part of the solution, then you're part of the problem. That's how I see it, period. Regarding this project in particular, you know, I made some pretty direct comments about what I wanted to see in the project, and there are no changes. And I made the mention of it last time, that I was going to start looking at these CZs in the context of the public benefits table that we had passed with the hotel moratorium. Just a quick rundown. If we were to alone take just the 13 buildings, not, not including all of the individual housing units in those buildings, which adds up to approximately 29, the project would start off with a negative 260 points right out of the gate, just for the buildings. To get to 200, that's a long climb. That's a long climb. The barely 10% affordable housing is not going to get you out of a 260-point hole. There aren't really no other public benefits involved. Yes, there's open space, there's a, you know, park area, outdoor courtyard, whatever you want to call it, but it's still not going to get you out of that hole. You know, like I said, I made some, made my comments clear about what I would like to see in this project, and nothing has changed. So unfortunately, at this time, it's not a project I can support. I support density. I support projects like this, but this project, as it's presented, I can't be in favor of it.
I'd like to make a comment, please.
Please.
I, I appreciate the creativity that went into all this. There's some great details. It's the kind of, if we had, we dealt some of the, with the issues that Commissioner Archibald had mentioned, I think this would be a great project on another site, but not on this one.
I agree. Some of the comments that were made were increasing the density towards the center of the site, making use of the old Asheville Arms building, which is not considered historic, building density there. The Charlotte Street elevation was way too tall, as far as I'm concerned. It's a bit of a dramatic change from the rest of the neighborhood. And I do appreciate that the sidewalk is improved. That's, that's huge. Multimodal transportation is severely lacking in this town, and I do appreciate that being included. I like the building. I like the design. I just wish it was at another location as well. Thanks.
Additional comments?
If there are none, I would like to make a motion.
I'll add a couple. I like the density of the proposed development. I like the proximity to the central business district and the prospect of folks being able to walk both along the Charlotte Street corridor as well as into downtown. I think the lack of affordable purchase and lease units is problematic. Having been around the site many times before and since the meeting, I don't have a lot of heartbreak about the proposed buildings that are being taken down. I like a lot of aspects of the development. I just think that the, and I recognize that you're doing the affordability without any additional funding, outside funding, and I think that maybe there's an opportunity to do both. I like the character of the information that's been provided along Baird Street that was supplemented. And I think that, I think overall, it's a good project. I don't have a problem with the location. I guess the biggest sticking point for me is the affordability issue. Mr. Rodriguez?
If there are no other comments, I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, before, before there's a vote on this, I'd like to be heard very briefly on the affordability question. This, this project at a density of 35 units an acre would not require under the UDO to have any affordability. I recognize that this, this board and City Council, and really all the citizens of the city of Asheville, would love to see every project have as many affordable units as possible, but it has to make economic sense. When my clients embarked on this project and began thinking about what could be done, the city of Asheville had a Luigi grant that would have given essentially a property tax abatement on the increase in the property tax value above what's there now, and then you look at the, at the totally finished project. And, and we would have easily qualified for that Luigi grant with 10% affordable units. And when I met with my clients, I told them about this, and they were enthusiastic. And they, and they planned the project around that guideline of 10% with a Luigi grant from the city of Asheville. Because it, again, it has to make economic sense. This is an expensive site to build, particularly with the streetscape improvements along Charlotte Street. And particularly with density at 35 units an acre may seem like a lot, but if you look across the street at the project that's being proposed, their density is significantly higher than 35 units an acre. With every additional unit per acre, of course, you can cash flow more affordability. That's why there is that swing. But the, but the city changed the rules on the Luigi grant. While we were working on this project, they changed it from 10% to 20%. So to now to qualify for Luigi grant, you have to have other criteria, all of which we would have easily met. And to your point, Mr. Archibald, the public benefits, the walkability, the proximity to transit, all of those things, we meet and exceed. The only negative points would be the removal of 12 houses. But, but it's otherwise all positive. So we would have qualified, but the city changed the rules, and that's, of course, absolutely up to City Council to do that. And so in light of that, that change, we circle back and we said, well, can we still do 10% affordable without a Luigi grant, without any help whatsoever from the city of Asheville? And my clients crunched the numbers, and they determined that they could, and we made that a condition. That is an offer that I have yet to see any developer make, without any assistance whatsoever, without any increased density. I've yet to see any individual or developer offer to do that at no cost to the city. So while I hear all of you in your, in your desire to see more affordability, I will tell you that if you're setting a new threshold, that it's got to exceed 10% with no help from the city and no increase in the density, you are setting an insurmountable bar for the overwhelming majority of property owners and developers in the city. You are saying to the developers, the people who are willing to put their capital at risk, you are saying to them, don't bother building in the city of Asheville because, you know, unless you're willing to lose money on your project. So before you vote, I would ask that you take all of that into consideration. This is a great project. You heard comments from a number of different folks, thoughtful people on all sides, and I think if you weigh all of those out and you think about the comprehensive plan for the city of Asheville, and you think about all of the goals that we do meet, there's only one that we don't, and that's preservation of these older homes. It's true, we don't meet that. We save one. But what we will do is create a community that will last and be something that we can all enjoy for the next 100 years. Unlike the existing homes, trying to, to, to save those won't create the kind of community that we know this city needs, the density that we know we need. So to turn this down, because, because the buildings are a little bit taller than you would like on Charlotte Street, and because we can't do more at this time, more than 10% affordability, to me, I would ask that you reconsider that vote. And I would tell you too, that we have not given up on looking at ways to add affordability. We are in active conversations with Paul D'Angelo to try to deed restrict some of the Asheville Arms units to, to make them as, as people move out and they become available to permanently deed restrict them for 20 years, so that they will remain affordable, even as we improve them and add, and add capital to, to raise that building up and modernize it. So when we bring this project to City Council, it will very likely have more affordability. What it has tonight is what we know we can commit to. And from a planning and zoning commission standpoint, I would ask each of you to thoughtfully consider what your vote means for not only this project, but for other projects that are looming on the horizon. Because we know what we need in the city of Asheville, and we need this project. And so with that, I thank you, Mr. Chairman, for that time, but, you know, this is an important project, and this is a very important vote. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman Mamet, one quick comment?
Please.
We are not allowed to, we have, this commission has not been presented any plans for what's going to happen across the street. We're simply looking at this particular site, so we cannot consider what's going on across the street. And I would like to make a motion if, if there are no other comments.
I'd like to make one, just really quick one. I appreciate your comments, Mr. Stevens, and I certainly am not asking the developer to take 20% or make it 20% affordable and have that be on their own dime. I mean, I, and I absolutely realize that 10% without any assistance from the city is a wonderful offer. What I'm saying is, personally, myself, as a commission member, want to see more, and I think the city needs to see more.
What we just heard then is a commitment to 10% at the developer's expense with the potential for additional before they go to council.
That's correct.
But I'm voting on what is in front of us tonight. If you're going to say you're going to add another 10% right now and put it in the B1.
I can say this without equivocation. We are in good faith negotiations with Paul D'Angelo to add an additional 10%, and that would come from two sources. It would come from, and by the way, we would take the 56 units that are in the Asheville Arms. We would add them to the proposed new units of 180 roughly units, whatever that math is, 200 and some units. whatever that math is, two hundred and some units. And, and we would, we would, we would say twenty percent of that total number of units deed restricted affordable to people making eighty percent of A M I for twenty years. Of those, a certain number would have to come out of the Asheville Arms. A certain number would have to come out of the, out of the new units. It would be more than the proposed eighteen. The exact number of new units and the mix with the Asheville Arms units will have to be negotiated with the city. We would have to get a commitment from city council for a Luigi grant for that to work. And the details of that would have to be negotiated. But I can promise you this, we're committed to trying to make that happen. I just can't tell you that it's done because it would, it would require a similar commitment from the city and we're just not quite there yet.
And so what would you be doing to make the Asheville Arms affordable to that degree? Would you not be renovating it?
Well, we're in the process of renovating all of it, including the roof, the landscaping on the outside, and just update that nineteen sixty vintage building. The, what would happen though, I mean fundamentally, the box would remain the same. The unit square footages would remain the same. But with respect to those units, they're, they're all very popular, but obviously people move out. And as they move out in the ordinary course of their lease, then that would make a unit available to be deed restricted. And then you could, people could income qualify under the city's rates to, to secure one of those units. And there would be a certain number of them, not all of them obviously, but a certain number of them that would, that would go together, and I can't remember the, the math on that. But the total number of units would be twenty percent under that scenario. I can tell you that the city is looking at that model of taking existing housing stock that is market rate and, and offering an incentive to an owner to convert existing housing stock units into affordable units. So we're not quite there yet. That's partly why this negotiation is ongoing. But I can, but I know that, that Paul DeAngelo and his team are looking at that precise issue right now.
Have you had any discussions among the development team, Mr. Stevens, about increasing affordability for the for sale units? Because that is also, if not an equal, almost greater concern by the day, trying to find for sale affordable units.
Honestly, Mr. Archibald, we haven't had that discussion. I'm happy to have that discussion. I hear you loud and clear. And you know, to my knowledge, if, if this project is approved by city council, I could be wrong, but I, I think even this one unit with, it's a duplex, the renovation of the older home on Furman, that would be the first of its kind that's ever happened in the city. To me, it's a really exciting model, but it's hard, you know, for folks to wrap their head around, you know, new construction, making that work. You know, without, I mean, they'll lose money on the renovation of this older home, but new construction is a whole other animal, and they would have to run the numbers on that. So I can't, I can tell you that we haven't discussed it yet. We, we will discuss it in light of your question, but I can't make any commitments on it.
Thanks. And I, I do, Mr. Stevens, I very much appreciate what you're trying to do and what the developer's trying to do. You know, again, it's, it's kind of one of those, I have to, what is in front of us tonight is, is kind of what I'm looking at. And I hear what you're saying and I, I want to see that happen. And I want to encourage you and the city to make that happen. But again, right now is kind of what I have to look at, so.
If, if you're, if this commission, and I, and I really would urge you to reconsider if you are, but if this commission is, is inclined to vote against it on the grounds of not sufficient affordability, I would state that as the basis of your motion. Because the motion that was read earlier on seventy Mills Gap said that, you know, we didn't meet the comprehensive plan, we didn't have enough walk, we have all of those things. So I, I, you know, I would not accept the staff's proposal for a motion on this. If you're going to deny it on affordability, but you think it's otherwise worthwhile, send that message to city council that we're only denying it on that basis. And I can promise you, we'll get the message and we will continue the discussion. I, I would hope the city staff will, will join us in that discussion because it won't happen without a partnership with the city.
I guess I do have some additional questions for Mr. Rodriguez. You indicated that, that this site is, is inappropriate. You don't feel like this is the site for the project. What site do you feel would accommodate this project?
I don't have anyone in particular, but I, I do serve on the downtown commission and there's, there, there are plenty of sites that would be much more amenable to this kind of, this type of, of, of development. It meets a lot of our, our goals. With the comments about affordability, if those could be met, I just feel like these residential units have been allowed to, these houses have been allowed to deteriorate. And now this is the, the, the most effect, the, the most economically viable option, but I, I don't think we're there yet. And we're, we've been asked to, to, to make a decision on what's been presented to us, not what's being negotiated with some other entity and that's going to go to city council. So my, my decision will be based on what's been presented to us right now.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I may address the site question, I'm no expert on available sites downtown, but I think you'd be hard pressed to find a five to six acre site that could do what this site can do with greenway paths in the middle, parking hidden behind the front structure, wide open sidewalk promenades, ground level retail with, with residential on top in a, in a, in an area that's as close to downtown as this. I, I don't think you're going to be able to create this anywhere else in the city. This is a unique opportunity with a unique piece of property, with a family that acquired these parcels over many decades. And this is an opportunity to do something great. There's a real risk frankly, if, if this project is ultimately denied. And of course, we'll go on to city council in any event. There's a real risk that the developer will just say, you know what, we're just going to do a use by right. We're going to build, you know, two-story buildings with, you know, twelve thousand square foot a level. And, you know, we'll just, and no, no expansion of the sidewalk, no expansion of the streetway, just kind of what, you know, what you see in other places. This is a unique, a unique site and a unique plan with a lot of thought that's gone into it. So the idea that, well, there ought to be somewhere else to do it. I, I'm not sure there is anywhere else to do what we have an opportunity to do, to spark Charlotte Street in a way that will, will really do something significant and long-term and meaningful for the city. So I would ask that if you, again, if, if you're inclined to deny it, please deny it only on the basis of affordability, and I can promise you we'll go back. But I, I would ask that you approve it. I would ask that, you know, whatever you came in with, whatever you were considering, think back about this plan, think back about what this city needs, and, 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 and consider sending a message to city council that this thoughtful group has considered this and they believe when you balance all of the equities, this is the right project with the recommendation that it ought to have more affordability. I'm, I'm happy to take that very seriously on the city council, and I can assure you they will take it seriously as well.
Just to address, so, you know, I, I made my comments at, at the previous meeting. You know, the, the concerns I had about the project affordability is one. The others were the height. I would prefer to see this as a four-story building on Charlotte Street. You know, the, the B1 conditions listed as eighty feet max. I realize that what you have on the elevations does not show that. It's seventy-five, I think, indicated to the top of the H V A screening, but the B1 conditions are asking for an eighty-foot max height. That is certainly far too much for that particular area. The affordability was one, not only affordability on rental, but also affordability on for sale units. And then I wanted to see the transit stop be fully funded, not just twelve thousand dollars towards it. So just, just to clarify, those are the three issues that I had with the project in total.
If I may just real quickly respond to that, Mr. Chairman, that just remember, density and affordability go hand in hand. If you reduce a floor of height on Charlotte Street, you will reduce the total number of units and you will eliminate the possibility of, you will significantly reduce the possibility of even ten percent affordable, and you will probably eliminate, well, you certainly eliminate the possibility of any, any more than that. So everything's a trade-off. What we've tried to do with this site is we've, onto the lowest part of the site, yes, it's high. But remember, its, its height is not any higher than the top height of the Asheville Arms building. So when you think of the topography of that whole tract, it is scalable and it is not going to loom over, over anybody. It, it is, it is a thoughtful height that balances the need to have enough units to make the affordability work.
Just a clarification, this is Lindsay with McNamara, Hazen Smith. The height of the tall buildings are fifty-five feet to the, I don't know that we've dimensioned of, I'm checking back on our drawings, nothing showing seventy-nine feet on our elevations. So I think that they're a little bit lower than that. And, and then that fifth story sets back on Charlotte Street too. So to try to be sensitive to, so it's four stories at the face, but that fifth story steps back.
It's always a consideration on conditional zones. As we've heard them, as I've heard them over the last nearly six years, what the other possible allowable developments are. And we discussed this last month when we heard this project. Additionally, a lot of the comments that have been made by both the Preservation Society as well as neighbors in the community that are opposed to the project have alluded to their desires for what they want to do with the property and I would simply point out it's not their property. And so they don't have any say in what happens to it. Mr. Rodriguez mentioned the preservation of the existing residences that are there and there would be nothing to prevent the applicant, the property owner, from removing those houses tomorrow. So I think we need to be cognizant of the fact that our vote is not preserving those residences. And our vote is not eliminating the development of the property. I, I would like to see more affordability. I hear a, an effort on the part of the applicant to achieve more than they've committed to tonight. And they have some time between now and council when they could potentially add to that.
I, I disagree. I don't, I don't know about demolishing historic structures if that's, if you're allowed to do that, because I know H R C had comments about the development.
I can comment on that from a legal perspective, Kim. This is not a local historic district. It's a national historic district. So the city does not have control as they would if it was a local historic to prevent demolition of the existing structures, if that helps.
Any further comment?
I would like to say I, I like the setup and the way it's made and, and Mr. Stevens' comments around them, trying to get to that affordability point. I'm from Asheville and I know the word affordability is, is, you could say, is a word that can be reached and some cannot be reached based off of what we're going on, what's going on right now in, in Asheville. So I do like the project. Not too far as nitpicky on, on the height of the, of the, of the buildings. But also possible renovation, I guess, trying to help out the Asheville Arms connected to the project is also, I do, do like and agree with. I know it's something to, to discuss. And hopefully they could get to that possible affordability piece, but it's, it's, you know, I still think that it's, it's a good project in, in my, my, my sense. And, but it's still, still up in the air and I guess Mr. Stevens will take care to rest far as how could we get this off, off the ground and possibly affordability. But thanks for everyone's, I mean, biggest thing, everyone's comments and, and, you know, I think that's, that's a good project for Charlotte Street.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'd still like to make a motion.
Please.
I move to deny the conditional zoning request for the seventeen properties identified in Exhibit A map from Community Business One, C B one, Residential Multifamily Medium Density, R M eight, and Residential Multifamily High Density, R M sixteen, to mixed-use expansion conditional zone, M X D E X P C Z, and the associated changes to the future land use map, map for several parcels from traditional neighborhood to traditional corridor, and find that the request is not reasonable, not in the public interest, and not consistent with the city's comprehensive plan or other adopted plans in that request. Number one, results in impacts to the existing character of the community by proposing a development that is not contextual to the neighborhood and the design and development is not complementary to the district's historic character.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to deny. Fate, vote in favor is to deny. Mr. Hope?
I'm in favor.
You wish to deny.
No, I wish to, to accept.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Archibald?
Aye.
Mr. Faircloth?
Nay.
Ms. B. Bennet?
Nay.
Ms. Levi?
Aye.
And I will vote nay also.
So the majority votes against, so the motion fails.
No, I thought it was three, three.
It was four.
Four, four, three, three ayes, four no.
Against the motion.
Correct. Against the motion to deny.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
The motion to deny fails. So then.
We could invite a different motion, right, Janice? Or you could just move forward that way to city council.
That's right.
So I make a new motion to support this project to move forward to city council.
But you will need to revise the, the reasons to approve. the reasons to approve. So right, you know, so a suggested motion. So if you have some reasons that you could, if you're moving to approve, and then you would just repeat, I think you have a sample motion.
I don't have it in front of me. That was really long.
Reverse what was said if you feel that it's, you know.
Yeah, I think you could just take the motion and just probably state it in the opposite.
So the motion would be, I move to approve the conditional zoning request for the 17 properties identified in the Exhibit A map from Community Business 1 Residential Multifamily Medium Density RM8 and Residential Multifamily High Density RM16 to Mixed Use Expansion Conditional Zone MXDEXPCZ and the associated changes to the future land use map for the seven parcels from traditional neighborhood to traditional quarter and find that the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and other adopted plans, and that the request results in impacts that are favorable or agreeable with the context of the neighborhood and the design is complementary to the historic character.
I think that would be that you'd make the motion and maybe Ms. B. Bennet could second if that's okay. That's.
Did you, I thought Tony didn't make the motion. Did you make that motion, Tony?
So moved.
I second.
Okay, thanks.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Hope.
Aye.
Mr. Rodriguez.
No.
Mr. Archibald.
Nay.
Mr. Faircloth.
Aye.
Ms. B. Bennet.
Aye.
Ms. Levi.
Nay.
And I'll vote aye.
Okay.
Question passes four to three.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the commission. This has been very helpful discussion. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. I want to respond to comments that I have received in this electronic age. We get comments while we're having this meeting. And the folks who are submitting comments about the applicant's ability to explain the project to us during this final deliberation need to understand the process. And I brought this up last week, or excuse me, last month. It is the applicant's right to explain their development to us, their case to us when we have questions for them. And I'm sorry, but public comment is closed. That was last month. This is the way the process works. If you want to change that process, you should get involved and try to change it. But don't complain about the process as it's codified right now. We will move on to legislative public hearings, new material here. Item one is a request to conditionally rezone properties located at 1617 Hendersonville Road from Institutional and Residential Multifamily High Density RM16 to Commercial Expansion Conditional Zone. The main parcel is identified as property identification number 9645899707 in the Buncombe County tax record. There are an additional 27 parcels on the site to be rezoned, all currently zoned RM16. These properties are numbers 14, 18, 28, 38, 39, 48, 49, 55, 58, and 59. Glastonbury Lane, numbers 9, 5, and 17 Hastings Court, and numbers 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, 7, 19, 21, 22, 32, 42, 52, 57, and 62 Lincolnshire Loop. And property identification numbers,
Tony, maybe I just want to say as identified on the agenda, just to spare you.
As identified on the agenda. There are about another dozen or so pin numbers there. The owner is Deerfield Episcopal Retirement Community, Inc. And the contact is John Harrell. The planner coordinating review is Ms. Tuck.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If you all just give me just a moment, I'm going to share my screen and run through some of the project exhibits for your reference. And just to remind everybody that when I share my screen and I try to make and maintain sort of visual contact with you all, I can't see your faces. So if you need me to pause and explain anything, please, if you could just speak up and just ask me to pause and I will stop what I'm doing. And please let me know when you see my screen.
I can see it.
Great, thank you. So as Mr. Hauser introduced, this is a conditional zoning request for the property located at 1617 Hendersonville Road. For those of us who are more familiar with South Asheville, you may better recognize this as the Deerfield Retirement Community. This is a very large community. The entire campus is approximately 125 acres. The portion of the project, or rather, this is a conditional zoning for an expansion of the retirement community and that expansion is going to be primarily focused in this sort of southern half, this little kind of toe that sticks out of the property, kind of to the south here. The access into the property will remain unchanged with access points from Hendersonville Road, Valley Springs Road, and Racket Club Road. And as you can see from the Exhibit A map, the property is currently zoned a combination of RM16 and institutional. You've got this little institutional piece down here in this bottom quarter or so. The proposal is to rezone the property collectively to the Commercial Expansion District. And while this is one large campus, you can see a number of all of these little kind of squares that are sort of concentrated here in the upper center. Those are sort of individual, you can almost think of them as condominium units of, that are basically represent the footprint of some single-family detached homes that for some reason have individual parcel numbers. So that's why Mr. Hauser had to mention all of those different addresses. So you have 1617 Hendersonville Road, which is the bulk of the property, and then these additional, I think, 20-some parcels that are kind of located there in the middle. It is all one community and it is all owned by the same entity, just for clarification. So the request is to rezone all of this property collectively to the Commercial Expansion District. A request to rezone to the Expansion District is required in this case because of the size and the number of units of the overall development plan. You can see from the attached Exhibit B map the extent of the existing community and you can see the undeveloped portion of the property sort of down here on the southern tip. The project area for this expansion plan includes, you know, sort of this sort of upper portion of this kind of southern tip. And it kind of extends down into this undeveloped portion of the property. I'm going to begin by sort of focusing on the inset context map. So if you remember the aerial map that we just looked at, you have the sort of developed portion of the property up top. You've got the upper portion of the lower half that is also developed. And this is the project area. It's this this sort of centerpiece here as well as the addition of this undeveloped portion on the very southern end. Now, I'm going to sort of zoom out a little bit so you can see the site plan in a little bit more detail. So kind of beginning on the northern end and again, you can kind of reference back to the inset map or the master plan. You can, you can see the existing assisted living building here in the turquoise, which on the larger master plan is represented here in gray. So the first building expansion is this addition, Item A, which is the skilled nursing expansion that will be built off of the assisted living wing. Moving south, you have an expansion of the existing community center. And then across the way, you have the new two-level parking deck. This parking deck will supplant some of the existing surface parking and then reconfigure, I think, the balance of that parking that exists today. Continuing down, you have a Building D, which is the new independent living building, which is a five-story building with 90 new units that will be added to the community. There is a covered pedestrian connection that connects to Building E, which is the new community center expansion. And then this also will have a covered pedestrian connection to the home. And that's, yeah, that's, sorry, that's Building E, which will also include 24 assisted living units. Then you have the smaller multifamily. As you transition out of the center of the campus, the most insulated part of the campus, it transitions closer to some surrounding single family. So then you kind of move into the smaller multifamily units. These are represented as Building F here, which they describe as hybrid homes. It's a three-level structure with 12 units total and 12 under the building parking spaces. The dark pink represents level, phase one of this building expansion or this community expansion plan. The lighter pink is phase two. So the most significant, or well, I shouldn't say most significant, but the largest single building addition in phase two is G, the future assisted living expansion, which is three levels with 51 units. And then you have a number of these additional hybrid homes, again, concentrated on the southern end of the property. Also included in phase two is a small grounds or facilities maintenance building located here at the very tip. In total, the project includes approximately 878,000 square feet of new building space and this is obviously spread across multiple buildings and multiple building additions. Included in that square footage is 234 independent living units, 75 assisted living units, and expansions of the skilled nursing and other community facilities. It also includes 362 new off-street structured parking spaces. You can also see from the master plan that the project also includes extensive walking paths throughout the entire community, connecting the buildings to each other and to the outdoor spaces. The outdoor space includes an innovative stormwater capture and management system that's designed to to also double as an amenity area for the residents and provide some habitat to flora and fauna. This project does comply with all the technical standards with the one exception of the sidewalks. The Commercial Expansion District requires 10-foot sidewalks throughout. But this is really contemplating like sort of more of a urban village or, you know, dense mixed-use project. So for, it's, we're increasingly recognizing that we have a number of projects where this doesn't really fit the mold. And we think a hierarchy of walkways makes more sense in very large communities like this. So the applicant is proposing walking paths and sidewalks that range in width from five to eight feet. This project will also meet all the open space and tree canopy preservation requirements. I will just kind of quickly just sort of scroll through some of the building elevations. As I mentioned, this project does comply with all height and other density requirements for the district. The architectural design is very consistent and compatible with the existing community, as you can see from the elevations. And I won't go through each building's elevations, but you know, you can see that they range in stories and in height depending on what the building is and the kind of facilities it contains. We'd be, I'd be happy to go over that in any more detail. I know the applicant is also available with their design team. They may actually be able to better answer some questions that may be specific to the buildings themselves. But between us, I'm sure we can hopefully answer any questions. So in summary, in addition to meeting all the technical standards, we do feel that the project also is aligned with a number of the key goals identified in the Living Asheville Comprehensive Plan, including providing infill development in strategically located areas, expanding the opportunity for walkability and outdoor access for the residents, and providing green stormwater infrastructure that can also improve community resiliency. And I'd be happy to answer any questions or the commission may wish to hear from, from the applicant before getting into any more detail.
I'd like to hear from the applicant. Any questions from the commissioners?
I've got one. I don't know that Shannon's going to know the answer, but I don't, and the applicant may too. I noticed on the conditions on item number 10, it mentions, and this isn't, this is a question because everybody brings up traffic. It notes that the traffic impact study is not required and I'm guessing that that has more to do with the type of facility. Because this is an assisted living facility, even though it's dense, the there, there, let's just face it, the residents aren't going to be driving. So even though we've got a ton of units and a lot of people, you're not going to have the traffic that you would if this was a, you know, normal or, you know, just kind of a normal, single-family, you know, development. Is that, would that be a correct assumption?
Mr. Archibald, my name is Bob. I'm with the Law Firm of McGuire Wood and Visit. I'm here for Deerfield Episcopal Retirement Community. Jeff Moore is our traffic engineer and he can respond to that question in more detail. But I think that you're, I think you're correct, that the number of vehicle trips per day, which is not high enough to require a traffic study or traffic impact analysis is a function of the kind of use that this is.
And that's fine and we can get into it later. I just, again, knowing that traffic always comes up and seeing that that was there, I wanted to make sure we at least skimmed over it.
That's why we had this.
Maybe I can, maybe I can respond to that because I actually worked at the Council on Aging, which is located in Deerfield. When I moved to town, I worked there for six months and there is quite a bit of traffic in there. I would say it's the normal amount of traffic that you see anywhere in Asheville. Doesn't matter what kind of assisted living facility or anything. I would call it more of a retirement community. Plenty of people going in and out of there. The Walmart in South Asheville is right across the street. And so that light is, they share that light and it's plenty busy and there's plenty of people walking, trying to use that intersection. So as always, I would say that the traffic study is due for that area right there and it's right near the parkway. So it's very, that's a very busy area.
Any other questions or comments from the commissioners?
I see that Mr. Moore is available. Would you all like to hear, he's the traffic engineer for the project. Would you like to hear from him about this?
Yeah, why don't we go ahead and turn it over to the applicant?
Thank you. I can, we were not planning to have Mr. Moore speak, but he certainly can. We knew the traffic would be an issue and that's why he's here. So since that question has come up, let's go ahead and let Mr. Moore respond to it and, and then if anything else comes up about that, then we can respond in kind. I do want to say though, that in my research, getting, getting prepared for this, I believe that the Hendersonville Road Corridor is right now the subject of a corridor study by DOT. Mr. Moore may have more information on that, but it's, that was one thing that I noticed. But I'm not the expert he is, so let him talk about, about the traffic.
Well, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here. Did in fact conduct a trip generation exercise based on the number, the uses and the densities that are proposed here. The results give me an idea of what the peak hour of traffic is going to be for, for the city of Asheville. The threshold for a trip, for a traffic impact analysis is 100 trips in a peak hour. The, and Mr. Archibald, you're exactly right. It is the types of uses that are proposed that do drive the number that we get through the generation exercise. For the AM peak hour, which occurs sometime between 7:00 and 9:00 AM, the exercise gives 67 trips, and those are broken up, you know, versus, you know, 29 trips entering, 38 trips exiting. The PM peak hour, which is between 4:00 and 6:00 PM, the number of trips would be 95, and that's broken up between 48 entering and 47 exiting. The senior adult attached housing, that's what we would call the independent living, the 234 units, and the PM peak hour is the driving factor here, would be expected to generate 58 trips. The assisted living, nowhere nearly, about half that much. The 75 beds would be expected to generate 27 trips during that time. The nursing home would be expected to generate about 10 trips during that PM peak hour. So the total's 95. I've been in conversation with the Transportation Department and confirmed that it does not trip the threshold for a full traffic impact analysis with the DOT. Their threshold is 3,000 trips per day. And we, we're about a third of that at 1,190. And again, the type, uses involved here determine how those trips are spread out during the day. So neither the DOT nor the City Transportation Department required a trip, a traffic impact analysis for this. And I'd be glad to answer any kind of questions, anything I can answer.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, for the detail on that.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it very much.
My pleasure, sir.
I have a, I have a question. It's not related to the traffic, though, but when Shannon brought up the picture, it still looks like there's a lot of trees left. So I'm just wondering, what is the potential for more growth there in the future?
You're asking what future expansion opportunities there might still be?
Yes.
I don't know that we're in a position to answer that. It's, this, the build-out of this project extends several years into the future, and I just, and, 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 and there's just, as far as I know, there are no plans for any more expansions. The, the city does have a tree canopy preservation ordinance, which came into being while we were planning for this project, and we either meet or exceed that ordinance, the requirements of that ordinance, and the requirements of landscape ordinance. And, and those ordinance will continue to apply.
Ms. B. Bennet, I'd also add that, that this is a conditional zoning. So whatever gets approved, that it'll be tied to this master plan that has been submitted with this application. So if there were plans for any kind of significant, or even moderate or minor additions or expansions in the future, it would require an amendment to this plan, and that will have to be reviewed and approved by this commission and the city council.
Thank you both.
If, unless there are any further questions from the commission, I've got a short introduction, and then we'll be able to go through the site plan a little bit more detail than Ms. Tuck did. So if that's okay with the commission, I'll go ahead.
Please proceed.
Thank you. As I said before, my name is Bob Oost. I'm a lawyer here in town with McGuire Wood and Bissett. And along with Lou Bissett, we are representing a Deerfield Episcopal Retirement Community in this application. First of all, I'd like to say thanks to Shannon for the staff report and presentation, and for guiding us through this process on a major project like this. Also here today is, on the video call, is John Harrell of THW Design in Atlanta. He's the lead architect, and he'll be doing most of the talking. Also here, but not expected to talk, are Keith Einsman, who is the director of facilities at Deerfield, and Kelsey Strobridge of Kimley Horn, who's a, who can talk about the civil engineering aspect of this. And I was going to say that Jeff Moore is here, but not, not expected to talk, but we've already, already changed that. The, before I turn it over to John, I want to talk a little bit about Deerfield. As, it's a 501(c)(3) organization, and it historically has done a lot of good in the community. We can go into detail on that if you want to. But it's, I can summarize that by saying it's been a valuable member of the Asheville and Buncombe County community since first locating here in 1955. Its campus is just south of Blue Ridge Parkway, and it's familiar to many people, although you all too, especially if you live in or drive through South Asheville. It's, it is pretty much self-contained, which may explain some of the traffic numbers. It's pretty much self-contained, and most, if not all, the services that the people, the residents need are located on campus, and they don't have to leave, they don't have to leave the campus very much. And that sense is like a college campus. Since, since its beginning in 1955, Deerfield has been through several expansions. The most recent one was in 2008, when they undertook a major expansion using the old conditional use zoning process, which required both a rezoning and a conditional use permit for the site plan, and that's what still applies right now. But as you'll see, this proposed expansion is spread across the entire 125-acre campus. It's not just in one place, and it's a Level 3 project because of its size, and it's going to occur over the course of several years. So for these reasons, it made sense to put the entire campus under one conditional zoning designation, commercial expansion, and incorporate, incorporate the 2008 conditional use permit as much as possible. So with that brief background, unless there are any questions, I'll turn it over to Mr. Harrell. He'll go through the site plan. We'll try to be short, but we'll go into as much detail as the commission needs. And I'll have a few brief remarks after Mr. Harrell's done, and we'll be, we'll be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. I'm John Harrell with THW Design, and we are really pleased to be, and have this opportunity to share a little more information about the, the design we're proposing for Deerfield. Let's see if I can share my screen.
And while Mr. Harrell's bringing up that presentation, I'll just remind the commission and anybody watching that a copy of this presentation is included in the meeting materials. So if anybody would like to look at them there.
Okay. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Do you see the presentation?
You have to, I think you'll have to move the, yeah, we're seeing the presentation behind the, there you go.
Okay, good. All right, thank you. So actually, Ms. Tuck has done a great job kind of introducing the project and explaining the parts and pieces, and so I'll probably be able to go through this pretty quickly and just try to add a little more detail on top of what she has already shared. Again, the current campus is bound by Hendersonville, Hendersonville Road on the east, Valley Springs Road on the north, accessed by Racket Club Drive on the kind of southeast. And then the southern part of the site has, actually says Racket Club Road, that's the Ramble is the correct name of that road. And currently, the original retirement community was located in this area here, and since then, it's expanded, and the main campus is over this location, with the, the skilled nursing and assisted living at the north end of the site, existing community center in the center, and then the independent living buildings at EF&amp;G, and then there are cottages spread throughout the campus. And then, yeah, to the south of Salisbury Drive is where much of the new expansion work is planned. A quick little aerial view. Again, the campus is, has a very strong character to its design, is very consistent, it's very heavily landscaped, is both very pedestrian-friendly. Again, there's walks, you can go everywhere you need to. At the same time, there are connectors between the buildings so that in inclement weather and cold weather, people can go from building to building inside. Again, this is the healthcare area up at the north end of the site with the skilled nursing at the top, assisted living in the middle. This is the existing community center, and then the three large independent living buildings. And then we've talked about the grounds maintenance building, and it's over here to the left. You know, again, not to rehash what's been said previously, but the plan is to kind of complete this circle. This, this area right here in the middle of the buildings is an important existing condition for the residents of Deerfield. They call it the Circle Woods, and it's a very important place for them. They like to go out, they've got trails, and to walk through this area, so the intent is to preserve that and kind of close the circle with the new large independent living building and the community center and assisted living building. Again, there are connectors between all of them. The skilled nursing building up at the top corner is really almost an identical duplicate of the existing wing adjacent to it, in size and character and layout. Then the parking deck and the new Blue Ridge Room multi-purpose expansion at the community center. And of course, the other site amenities, the pond, the, you know, amenity areas, amenity lawn off the community center, and walkways. Again, the skilled nursing, the Blue Ridge Room, and the parking deck. So very briefly, the skilled nursing, again, it's a two-story building, the detailing, the size, the massing, all of it is just about a duplicate of the existing building that's there now. The community center, where we're doing the Blue Ridge Room, the new Blue Ridge Room is actually in this space right here. So again, the concept is to make it look like it's always been there, same character, and it's been a part of this building from day one. You know, not to look like a big new multi-purpose room just kind of stuck on the side of the building. And then the parking deck is going to be nestled into the grade, into the landscape, so that you only, you only see the two stories on this front end where you come in and out at the lower level. Grading on the other sides are going to be raised, so the impact from, visual impact of the parking deck is going to be minimized. So again, the southern part of the site, we've got the three large IL buildings, and that's the existing maintenance building. So the initial phase of work, again, as described previously, the IL, the community center IL, and two of the hybrids, and of course, all the site amenities. We would be, in the first phase, saving trees in this area right here, and of course, outside of the new Loop Road. So that's another major piece of the work. The existing road runs across here, the existing Salisbury Road, so we will be rerouting it around the site, actually following the ridge around the site, to then set up for the future development of additional hybrid homes. Quickly, the large independent living building is very much in keeping with the existing large independent living buildings there. Really, same detailing, same materials, you know, a few variations, but for the most part, it's, it's going to look like it's part of those original buildings. The connectors, again, are in keeping, character-wise, with the existing characters on the site, the characteristic of the existing connectors on the site. The smaller hybrid units, again, this lower level is actually parking, and then we have three levels of units above, a total of 12 independent living units. And so the front, where you come, they share a driveway, they're next to each other, they come in pairs. So you enter the building on the side for parking, but the backside is only three stories, and it opens up onto the amenities. And the design is such that every unit has a view back toward the amenities, the lake amenity. And again, the community center, assisted living, the lower level is the community center, and it's going to have dining, it's going to have an arts and crafts area, various amenities for the residents. And then the upper levels are two floors of assisted living units. And then final build-out would be the additional hybrids in the second phase of the commons and IL building. Again, the intent is to provide walking trails, paths, whether they're just a natural part of sidewalks or cutting through the woods as the project is developed. Few quick character sketches to give a feel for kind of the scale and the massing and the relationships with the IL building, beyond the community center with the event lawn on the water and the two, the two hybrids on the right-hand side. So a view across the pond, again, that'd be the community center on the left, the connector in the middle, and the large independent living building on the right. So this is kind of looking the other direction toward the community center event lawn. Now, the pond itself would be designed to look like a mountain lake, you know, something that looks natural and, you know, fits into the habitat with a waterfall feature up at the, the top of the lake, again, being designed to look like a mountain waterfall, a natural waterfall. So that's a super quick pass through the design, and certainly entertaining questions.
Any questions from the commissioners?
I had a, excuse me, I had a couple for the applicant. I was curious, I noticed that, you know, you were doing some work with the stormwater. It was noted in the conditions as well as in the staff report, working on taking the stormwater off the roof, routing it through the lake, and, you know, kind of dealing with it in that way. I was curious as to what other types of, you know, environmental or sustainability measures you might be taking. I mean, it seems, you know, actually, it's kind of nice that you left that one photo up there, that aerial photo. That's a lot of roof service that could have some nice solar on it that seems like, you know, Deerfield itself would be interested in. So I'm just kind of curious if there were any, any plans or any thoughts given for that. And also, if I'm not mistaken, there is a shuttle bus that Deerfield runs that goes down to the public bus stop, the art system bus stop that's down on Hendersonville Road. So if you could just kind of clarify that, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, as far as sustainability goes, there has been quite a bit of discussion about options that we're looking at. And we haven't really settled on anything yet. We are looking at potentially doing... I don't know, my mind's going blank. Geohydro, that's right, I'm sorry, apologize. We're going to run some test wells on the site to see if there's a potential to do a small amount of geohydro, kind of as a test case for future development. And we're in the process of pulling together proposals to get that done. There has been... There has been discussions about solar. The challenge with solar is, as you mentioned, the, among other things, the the amount of space it takes for the solar panels to be able to generate what we need for buildings of this size. But it's an ongoing discussion that we're internally, that we've been, we've been debating. As far as the shuttle bus, I'm going to have to ask Bob if he if he can answer that, if he knows about that.
Um, I'd be glad to try and respond to that. And Keith Eismann is here from Deerfield who could probably give a better response than I can. But the, you're right, there is a shuttle bus and and it it circulates through the property, but it also provides shuttle service to to downtown and and to the hospital area for those folks who need it. Mr. Eismann may be able to respond more to that. And I'm also aware that Deerfield Deerfield has undertaken and continues to undertake some energy-saving measures in all of its in its existing buildings and those would be carried over into the new structures as well. And and I don't mean to put Mr. Eismann on the spot, but if if you all need more information on that, he's probably the right, the best person to ask on that.
So this is Keith Eismann. Thanks for the time from everybody. A couple of things we do provide for our residents. We do local transportation to like the Walmart, doctors, physicians, pharmacies, et cetera. And some of our employees do use access to that bus stop that's right off our off our location right there at the entrance. And as far as environmental, we've taken a tremendous amount of steps lately with LED replacements on lights. We're researching some electrical battery stations, which will be probably installed in the October month of this year for electrical vehicles. We've added a bunch of motion sensors in stairwells. So we spent close to about $2 million within the last five years on energy conservation and saved hundreds of thousands of kilowatt hours during this time. So we're going to continue those efforts in these new buildings. And as John was saying, we are researching geothermal in one of the hydro buildings. We just don't have enough data yet on on the actual boring holes. We are looking at that through through our engineer. But again, tremendous amount of energy savings we've projects we've undertaken in the last three years for sure. I'm not sure if I answered your questions any further on those topics.
Yeah, no, you did. And I was curious about the shuttle bus and in thinking about employees and, you know, people coming to work and be able to utilize that bus stop. So it was a, yeah, you did answer that.
I'd like to make a comment, Mr. Chair.
Please.
I just wanted to. I I I'm very glad to see this really nice naturalistic design that you've you've incorporated. I'm really glad to see all the walking amenities, the tree save areas are are sufficient, not just sufficient, but it's really nice to see that that you've preserved that much of the existing tree canopy. And I I I hope that doesn't get developed in the future, but it's very nicely done in a park-like setting and I I really react very well to that, that this kind of design. And thank you for for submitting that to us.
Any other questions or comments for the applicant? If not, and if that is all the applicant has, we can open, oh, go ahead.
Let me just conclude by saying that, as as I hope has been evident from this presentation, the design team has worked hard and the plan meets or exceeds all the requirements of the ordinance's landscaping, tree, tree canopy preservation. And 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 it also meets or exceeds the requirements of the commercial expansion zoning that we seek. It's also consistent in several respects with 2018 Living Asheville Comprehensive Plan as noted by Shannon Tuck. And and we're especially pleased landscaping and tree preservation efforts have, essentially have. Unless you all have any questions, that concludes our presentation and we're available for questions after the public hearing too.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we will open for public comment at 6:35.
Mr. Chair, there's no one waiting in the queue for public comment.
Okay, seeing no body waiting, we will close for public comment at 6:35. Further discussion, questions or comments from the commissioners?
Not elected, make a motion. I move to recess the public hearing for the conditional zoning request for the property located at 1617 Hendersonville Road.
We have a motion and a second. We will vote, Mr. Hope.
I'm sorry, that didn't, was that a complete motion with the reasons why?
Motion to recess.
It's a motion.
We have to recess until the
My bad, I'm sorry, sorry, sorry.
We're not the only ones that are confused sometimes.
So I
Thank you.
I apologize.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mr. Archibald.
Aye.
Mr. Faircloth.
Aye.
Ms. Bennet.
Aye.
Ms. Levi.
Aye.
I will vote aye also. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and member of the commission. And just to clarify that, that was to recess to your July meeting, I think, I think that's July 7th.
That's correct.
Yes, sir. Additional public comment will be received for for 24 hours after this meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Rose and Mr. Moore and Mr. Harold.
Thank you.
Thank you all. We'll see you on the 7th.
Thank you.
Our next item is a request to conditionally rezone the property located at 66 Long Shoals Road from institutional to residential expansion conditional zone. Property is identified as PIN 9644797882 in the Bunkham County tax record. The property owner is the Virginia So Wallace Schmidt Trust and the contact is Warren Sugg. The planner coordinating review is Ms. Tuck. And you're muted. There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I let give me just a moment and I will share my screen. Please let me know when you see it.
Yes.
Okay, so as Mr. Hauser has indicated or introduced, this is a conditional zoning application for the property located at 66 Long Shoals Road. The property is located, as you can see from the Exhibit A map, directly off of Long Shoals Road in the South Asheville area. For some context, TC Robertson High School is to the north and the Lake Julian Park is to the south. Today, the property is zoned institutional, as is the surrounding properties, including the high school. And of course, this is a request to rezone that property from institutional to residential expansion. Again, this is a a request to rezone to an expansion district due to the size and number of units of the overall project. You can see here from the Exhibit B map that the property is developed, it is developed in a very low density or low intensity manner. However, I believe that's just a single-family home that would be demolished to make room for the new construction. And I just want to point out the proximity of the high school to the north and some of the surrounding uses. This has, this property has subsequently been redeveloped since this aerial imagery was shot. And this is now a small commercial office and service building. And this is also the gross funeral home to the west. Oh, and let me, we did receive a revised site plan that I'd like to share. There we go. That is the updated site plan for the commission's reference. As you can see, we have two buildings. This is a multifamily residential project, hence the request to rezone to residential expansion. The total acreage is 2.85 acres and we have two buildings. So all of those units, the 87 units that are proposed are split between these two buildings. As you can see from the site plan, Building A fronts directly on Long Shoals Road, Building B is sort of tucked here in the back. And you have the shared surface parking lot in between the two structures. The proposed off-street parking is 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 kind of innovative. It is a combination of surface lots. It has also some covered garage spaces as well as some tandem spaces. Tandem spaces typically work best in households. So for a residential project, we think it's it's appropriate. In total, the project includes 87 units. As I mentioned, something that is a little bit exciting about this project is that this is the first project that I reviewed that is taking advantage of an increase in a density bonus, that is a by right option in the residential expansion district, increasing the units from 20 units an acre or the density allowance from 20 units an acre up to a maximum of 50 units an acre if 20% of the units are designated affordable to households earning 80% of AMI or below and for a minimum period of 20 years. So with this project, we do have 20% of the units, that's 17 units total, that are being set aside as affordable for those, for that designated period and at that 80% AMI. This is reflected in an updated list of B1 conditions, which I don't believe made it into your into your meeting materials because this was submitted after the meeting materials were posted. But I can be sure to make that available for anybody who's interested. Similar to the last project, this project also proposes a mix of walking paths ranging in widths from five to eight feet. Also, just kind of a nice feature, this application includes a connection to the side, to, excuse me, to the adjacent high schools. So the comprehensive call plan calls out for a desire to have more walkable routes to schools. And so this is one way that this project in particular supports the comprehensive plan. And again, similar to the previous project, this project, besides the sidewalks, does support or does meet all technical compliance with the UDO and supports the Living Asheville Comprehensive Plan. I mentioned already the sidewalk connection to the school. It also provides infill development in a strategically located area. Long Shoals Road is is targeted for future development in the plan. And then, and more specifically, it provides housing units in a strategically located area that has proximity to transit. There is transit line on Long Shoals Road, also to schools as illustrated with that connection to the high school and to parks. You've got the Lake Julian Park just across the street. And that concludes my introduction. I know the applicant and his representatives are also available for additional, to fill in some details. And just really quickly, I'll run through the elevations. The two buildings are what we call split buildings, a 3-4 split and a 4-5 split. So the 3-4 split means it's three stories on one side and four stories on another. It's pretty common in Asheville to take advantage of some topographic change in order to kind of tuck in an extra story. So the building fronting on Long Shoals is the 3-4 split and the building at the rear adjacent to the high school is the 4-5 split. So you can see, again, I won't go through each individual elevation, but you can kind of see the elevations and get a sense of the character and the materials that are being proposed. And I'll pause here and answer, be happy to answer any questions or the commission may wish to hear from the applicant first.
Why don't we do that? Let's hear from the applicant.
Sure. Derek Allen, I represent the applicant in this matter and we've got our folks also on the line. You'll hear from Warren Sugg from Civil Design Concepts. And I do have Adrian Danahmiller from Millstone Management, which is the developer who has this property under contract with the the property owner. I think this is, you know, if there was ever a timely project in our area, I think we have it right here. It's one that we've been working on for more than half a year. We've worked with staff, obviously, and worked with the development team to come up something that we think fits and fits that area as well as the comprehensive plan policies and meets some of our affordable housing needs. In working with staff, I'm not aware of anything that was suggested by staff that we didn't incorporate in as a condition. And certainly, the affordable housing commitment here with 20% of affordable housing units and committing to those at 80% AMI for a 20-year period is a pretty remarkable commitment on behalf of this development team and something that we're certainly, certainly proud of. With that, this for HUD voucher units. And, you know, again, these, this is something that's very timely and needed in in our area. We developed this plan in conjunction with the city's master plan. We looked at targeted growth areas that were needed, the proximity to the high school, public transit to park amenities. And again, the affordable housing piece that fits in with the city's master plan. Ms. Tuck definitely has the the new conditions or the updated conditions, so let's make sure we get those out. And with that, I'd like to introduce Warren, Warren Sugg from CDC to go through the technical requirements. I think the staff report speaks for itself and so I won't belabor this point. Warren, if you'll go through our technical requirements for this and how we meet those specs and walk through our site plans, I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Warren Sugg, Civil Design Concepts, and thank you to the board and to staff for your communication helping us to this, to this step. So as mentioned by Shannon and introduced by Derek, we are looking at a site that's 2.85 acres. As mentioned, we want to be 87 units, which is above the 20 units an acre. That is the standard density, but as mentioned, we do have that 20% affordable, which allows us to go all the way up to 50 dwelling units an acre. And we're roughly at about 31 units an acre, so we're well within that tolerance. We fully expect to meet the setback requirements of the residential expansion, which is 15-foot front, side and rear. Parking on this site, minimum would be 90 spaces, a maximum of 177 spaces. And that's all shown in your data block on your site plans, which I think you probably have in your packet. But we are at 125, so we're right in the sweet spot of that 90 to 177. And, you know, one, one thing I will add is we have looked at the number of units and we have not counted the tandem parking spaces as part of that. While it is part of that 125, it is not part of the meeting the minimum. So we recognize that many times with these two and three-bedroom units, it would be very easy to have that tandem as a husband and wife or any type of agreement there between people that are in the same unit. But it 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 meets that and and does very good between the garages, the surface and the tandem. We do have the open space shown on this site. We have put in our B1 conditions a little relief on some of the width of open space because this is a pretty tight site trying to do infill and, but we do meet the requirement for the open space. We've got some very nice centralized courtyard areas, open space areas, and those are going to be all usable, open space. Many times we have open space that is on sites and are just, just not as usable as we would like. In this case, just about 100% of the open space is all actually usable. So I'm very excited about that for this site. Water and sewer connection on this site is is very easy. We have sewer that is literally running down our western property line, so we're able to make very easy connection to that. We have water line along our frontage of Long Shoals, certainly have those allocations in hand and we we fully expect it will be well covered on water and sewer. From a stormwater perspective, we expect that this will have a below-ground storm collection system, most likely a storm tech system, which is readily accessible and used throughout Asheville and Bunkham County. And that will meet all of our stormwater requirements for the site. Couple of little things I'll point out is we're well below the 80% maximum impervious. We're at about 52% impervious for this site. We do have all the needed trees, not only just tree save, but planted trees. We do not have to have property line buffering. We do not have to have property line buffering, because we do have institutional on all sides of us and then Long Shoals to the south. But we do meet the landscape requirements everywhere else. One thing on the sidewalks, we do have a five-foot sidewalk that is along, Long Shoals that we would propose to keep in lieu of having a 10-foot sidewalk there. And that has been discussed with not only Shannon, but also Ken Putnam. As, as opposed to digging all that up and making more of a disturbance there. The other thing I'll mention is we are excited about the opportunity to possibly have connection up to the school. That is, continuing from the school, wanting connection up to them. They have sometimes in the past been reluctant to have connectivity, but we are open to that if, if Buncombe County Schools is. And I believe that hits all of the points. We do have access along Long Shoals and we have had some early discussions with the NC DOT as far as that driveway connection point. Is there any questions of me from a civil engineering technical standpoint?
Any questions from the Commission?
I guess this is more of a comment than a question, but I'll throw it out there. And first of all, thank you for the presentation. I'm excited to see just the accessibility or potential access from this property to the school and location. You did briefly mention the stormwater management of the site. I guess that's my, my concern, looking at the property and its location near to Lake Julian. And just being a resident in South Asheville, the, the stormwater management in this area is lackluster. I would just like to say it would be awesome to see any kind of permeable paving or anything to help mitigate that stormwater even further than what you're proposing. Again, not a question, just more of a concern.
God, thank you for the comment. Yeah, we, currently, currently there is a little bit of a draw that's on the west side of that site. And we expect and just have planned for there to be a storm tech near our driveway entrance. That's the place where it makes the most logical sense. And that's the spot where we can collect it up, use gravity to our advantage, because that's the lowest elevation point on the site. And then collect that, treat it, infiltrate it. And, and then we have some good stormwater boxes and pipes that are right there on Long Shoals that we can make connection into. So I feel really good about where we've got stormwater heading on this one.
Thank, excuse me, thank you Shannon for putting up those B1 conditions, because a couple of questions I had related to those about the number of units. And I thought I heard Mr. Allen mention the four HUD voucher units. Question on that connection to the high school, and I, and I totally understand it. It obviously requires Buncombe County Schools being in favor of it. And I would just put my word in that I hope that they would work with you on that, because that was one of my things when I first saw this. I was like, man, they should make a connection to the school. Where would, I'm assuming that would occur. Okay, I can see it right there on your site plan. Thanks for popping that up. That shows right there. Another question that, you know, I kind of brought up on the, on the project before, are there any other environmental sustainability types of things you're looking at with this project, solar or lead or anything like that?
To this point, no, we haven't, we haven't really been looking into any kind of solar or wind or green roofs, anything like that. We, we feel very confident in what we're handling right now for stormwater runoff and infiltration. And then, then too, I think with the, the look of the buildings, and I think some of the, maybe the very last page of this set gives you a pretty good look at sort of the architectural and the, the view of it. I'm not sure that solar would be advantageous that close to Long Shoals and just given, you know, school and some other places. But yeah, I mean, we're, we're certainly trying to be as green as we can possibly be with it.
In some ways, it'd be better to have solar right there next to the school on the road. Makes people realize it's there.
I just want to say first, I'm very excited about this project, because I drive by there all the time. And it's nice to, nice to finally see something going in that lot. So thank you very much. I would like to know what the plan is for maybe like a crosswalk going across from this, because Long Shoals is, people don't go 45, they go 65 down Long Shoals Road. So like especially going across to Lake Julian Park with all the families and kids that we are planning on moving in here. Would be nice to see us work together to get a crosswalk. And especially just like some blinking lights to bring people's attention, because I, my fear is that people are going to cut across right there and not go the extra 100, 200 yards down to the light to go across to Lake Julian. So I would love to see us work together to get something there to go across Long Shoals Road.
Understood. Yeah, we would need to discuss that with NC DOT, since that's their roadway. And it being a five-lane highway, they certainly will have a lot of input in, in where the crosswalk would be and just the safety around it. But I certainly hear your, your comment.
Yeah. And that's something that we would, you know, we'd certainly support, but is out of our, out of our control in terms of where it goes. But yeah, anything that makes our residents safer is going to, you know, make us happier and them safer. So we support that. Thanks for that comment.
Yeah, actually, thank you, Jennifer. And I was going to ask, and Mr. Hauser and Mr. Rodriguez, I think, yeah, you guys were both on the Commission. And Ms. Tuck, there was a project that was on the other side of the road closer to Lake Julian. What was it? Just west of Overlook? And wasn't there some proposal to upgrade the crosswalk there? I can't remember. Was it, that was two years ago? So I, I feel like there's something that was getting upgraded at that light already. I realize it's a little distance away from, you know, the project from what Ms. Bubinick is talking about. But I, I feel like there was some improvements in that area to get across Long Shoals Road.
I, I don't specifically recall, but I'd be happy to reach out to our transportation staff, who I'm sure can, who would know if there was.
The only other new project there was Skyline Exchange, which is down and in further. It's on the other side of the school. I don't, I don't, and I go down that road all the time. I don't remember any improvement since that project's gone in. You sure you're not thinking Mills Gap? That was an improvement a long time ago. Was dependent on NC DOT. Or the, I think at the time. So what I was going to say to Ms. Bubinick is sometimes you might, you know, it might not be a B1 condition, but you can ask as a, as a recommendation for the applicant to check with NC DOT. And then that recommendation goes forward before it goes to council.
Yeah, I definitely think that we should do that. I mean, I know the first Skyline Plaza is, or whatever the name of that new place is, that's over there. It's like the sushi, sushi place or whatever that's in there. But I mean, people do fly down that road and I go down that road all the time. And my thought is like some sort of crosswalk thing, like that's in Billmore Village, which also people don't really pay attention to, but they do. It's like, it does bring your awareness to it. Like if you're a local, you know that it's there. And if you're a tourist, you stop when you see somebody crossing the street, you know? So it's like, something like that has got to be done. And if we need to partner with DOT, then that's what we need to do. And that's why we're all in this commission, is to bring awareness to things like that. But I would hate to see, you know, like a teenager from TC taking their little brother over to Lake Julian and they're cutting across the street and a car, something happens to them. So I think that we all need to be more aware of, you know, what happens in that area.
Couple of comments and a couple of questions. Thanks a lot for the commitment that you're making to affordable housing. I really appreciate that. The, for the rest of the Commissioners, the type of storm system that Mr. Sugg refers to, although it's below grade, it is open bottom. So the water has an opportunity, the stormwater has an opportunity to infiltrate to some extent. So it's actually, in this area where we have low permeability soils, it's actually a better system than permeable pavement. And it's a very common system that's used on a lot of sites around here. I noticed in your plan that you have a series of crosswalks that connect the sidewalks, basically from that back unit, or the back building up to the front, the sidewalk along Long Shoals. And, and it's probably already detailed this way, but I just want to make sure that those crosswalks are to ramps rather than stand-up curb or curb and gutter, so that, so that somebody who, who need, who's disabled in some way can use that, that access. Another question, I guess, that I had is you show your, it appears that the dumpsters are in the northeast corner. Is that correct?
That is correct. There's two dumpsters up near the east side of Building B in the parking lot.
And I'm just curious if you've run auto turn on that and the dumpster truck can actually get in and get to those?
We have run it and we do think that any combination of maybe the backup style that's used more in downtown or potentially the, the front load. They'll have to do a little maneuvering there, but I think it's possible. And we have run truck turn on.
And then my, my standard question I ask on so many developments like this, where is the bicycle parking?
Bicycle parking, we have a set of it directly south of Garage Number One. You can see some, some concrete with four blocks there. And then we also, I believe, have, we may have some up near Building B. But I know there's some right there in front of Building A, between Building A and Garage One, which is also where the leasing, leasing office is as well.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
But sadly, the wild cars.
No, actually, Razor. I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I said unfortunately, all the bike parking is outdoors.
This is, can you guys hear me? This is Adrian. I'm the developer. Yeah, we have indoor implement storage in the basement level of Building B that has indoor bike storage and also like outdoor implement storage. So that's not shown here, because it's part of the architectural or plans for the building, but we're planning on having that.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments from the Commissioners for the applicant?
Tony, I do have one clarification to ask Derek on the affordable housing conditions. Derek, normally we write it to say that there would be a deed, affordable housing deed restriction that the city would provide and that you'd enter into. Is that something that applicants agreeable to for the, the 20, the 20%, 80% for 20 years?
It is.
Okay. So we'll revise the condition for next time. And also, I see now that you're, you're going to apply for Luigi. You know, for Luigi's, one of the criteria is that you've got to start that process before you go to, definitely to city council. So have you started to apply or talked to Paul about that in community development?
We have talked to Paul. We're in that process and we'll start pushing that forward next week.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Just a reminder, please mute yourself if you're not speaking. Any additional comments or questions for the applicant? Seeing none at this time. At 7:03, we will open for public comment.
Mr. Chair, there's no one waiting in the queue for public comment.
And we will close public comment at 7:04. Would somebody like to make a motion or any other comments?
I'll make a motion. I move to recess the public hearing for the conditional zoning request for the property located at 66 Long Shoals Road.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will take a vote. Mr. Hoke?
Aye.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Archibald?
Aye.
Mr. Faircloth?
Aye.
Ms. Bubinick?
Aye.
Ms. Levi?
Aye.
And I will vote aye also. The case is recessed until our next meeting.
Thank you very much. We'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to remind the Commission and anybody who might be out there, the next meeting for the Planned Zoning Commission will be July 7th, Wednesday, July 7th. And this will be an in-person meeting, as we had decided, or as the Commission has decided. So this will occur in the first floor conference room of City Hall. And more information to the new Commissioners will be forthcoming.
And that concludes our agenda for this evening. Ms. Tuck just mentioned the next meeting date. So if somebody would like to make a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Nice meeting, everyone.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
See y'all smiling faces soon.